Welcome to A C E. Today we have to discuss target S S C, C G L and C H S L pure maths session thirteen. Okay, question number one, first question C. If a cube has a volume X cubed minus three X square minus forty X, then what is the difference between the smallest and the largest dimensions of the cube? What is the volume of a cube? Volume of a cube is L into B into H, right? So, three dimensions are there for a volume of a cube, right? So, here the total volume is given, that is given how much? X cubed minus three X square minus forty X. So, if you factorize, you can factorize this, what is the common factor, common thing here? X is common. So, if you take X as common, X squared minus three X minus forty, right? Again, X squared minus three X minus forty, if you factorize, what will come? So, forty, we have to get forty, three means eight into five, eight five is forty. Minus is there means for bigger value, you have to write minus. So, what is the factor? X minus eight into X plus five, right? So, automatically, see, you can recheck X squared plus five X minus eight X minus three X minus forty. So, now what we are observing? L B H and A. So, same L B H. So, one is X and another one is X minus eight and third one is X plus five. So, three dimensions we are getting, whatever it is, whether length, breadth or height, either in a array. So, three dimensions we are getting. We, what he is asking, the difference between the smallest and the largest. So, you can observe this, now what is the largest one? This is the largest and this is the smallest one, right? So, the difference we have to know. So, the difference is what will come? X plus five minus X minus eight. That is how much? Thirty. So, what is the difference between the smallest and the largest dimension? Thirteen, okay? Then, next one, question number two, second question. If A Q plus B Q plus C cube plus six A B C equal to zero and A plus B equal to B plus C equal to C plus A equal to two, then what is the value of A B plus B C plus A? Actually, so the formula we have to know, A Q plus B Q plus C cube plus six A B C. A cube plus B cube plus C cube plus six A B C. We can write it as A plus B plus C whole cube, A plus B plus C whole cube minus three A B into A plus B minus three B C into B plus A minus three C A into C plus A, okay? So, already we know, A Q plus B Q plus C Q plus six A B C is given value is how much? Zero. So, this value is zero. And A plus B plus C. So, one condition is given here. What is the condition given? A plus B equal to B plus C equal to C plus A equal to two. If you add these three, you three add this, they must understand. Two A plus two B, two A plus two B plus two C equal to how much? Six. That means A plus B plus C equal to how much? Three, right? So, A plus B plus C equal to three. So, A plus B plus C equal to three means three cube minus three A B into here, A plus B, B plus C is, C plus A, all values are equal to two. So, this value is two. Similarly, minus three B C into two, minus three C A into two. Means what we are getting? So, twenty seven equal to, what is the common factor? Six is the common. So, six into what we are getting? A B plus B C plus C A, right? Twos and nine. So, what we are, what is A B plus B C plus C A? So, A B plus B C plus C A equal to how much we are getting? Nine by two. So, option D is the right answer. Actually, this is the formula we are getting from A plus B plus C whole cube. This formula, I can derive just, A plus B plus C whole cube formula is A cube plus B cube plus C cube plus three into A plus B into B plus C into C plus A. This, this is first formula. The second formula is A cube plus, A cube plus B cube plus C cube minus three A B C. Formula is, so, A plus B plus C into A square plus B square plus C square minus A B minus B C minus A. Two formulas, I will derive just actually. This, three styles, I will write, A Q plus B Q plus C Q minus three A B C formula. Three ways to write, one formula is A plus B plus C into A square plus B square plus C square minus A B minus B C minus A. Second formula also, we can write it as A plus B plus C into A plus B plus C whole square minus three A into A B plus B C plus C A and I will write. So, different, different ways, I will write. Okay, so from here, so what is A Q plus B Q plus C Q plus three A, six A B C? Formula, we can write it as A plus B plus C whole cube minus three A B into A plus B minus three B into B plus C and minus three, three C A into C plus A. If the length of the cube is decreased by twenty percent, breadth is increased by forty percent and the height is decreased by twelve point five percent, then find out the percentage change in the volume of the cube, right? See, uh, see here the length, the length is decreased by how much? Twenty percent. Breath is increased by forty percent and the height is decreased by twelve point five percent. Then, what is the percentage change in the volume of the cube? Right? Actually, here three parameters are there. What are the three parameters? L, B, H are the three parameters. So, three parameters, percentage is, X plus Y plus X Y by hundred. How many times we have to do? Twice we have to do, two times one. Okay now, so, first step, any values we can take. So, L is how much? Twenty percent is decrease, decrease means minus twenty percent. And breadth is increased by forty percent means plus forty percent. And height is decreased by minus twelve point five percent. So, decreased by twelve five point five percent means minus twelve five point five percent. So, first we can take any two, two this. And now to minus, first minus twenty plus forty plus minus twenty into forty by hundred, right? So, here twenty minus eight, that is how much? Twelve percentage, twelve percentage. So, with this result, E result, the third factor, third factor, the same thing again we have to do. That is X plus Y plus X Y by hundred. So, what is X? X is how much? Twelve. Y is how much? Minus twelve point five plus, twelve into minus twelve point five by hundred, same thing. So, here minus zero point five, so twelve into twelve point five, one fifty. So, minus one fifty by hundred means minus zero point five. Minus one point five means how much? Minus two percentage means. What is the result, the result change in the volume of a cube? Two percentage decreases, it is decreasing by two percentages. So, minus comfort in that day, so it is decreasing, plus in that day, it is increasing, right? So, option B is the right answer. Then, next one, question number four, fourth question. If A, B, C are the three sides of a triangle, whose area is how much? Ten square centimeter and S is to, S minus A is to, S minus B is to, S minus C is ten is to one is to, two is to five. Then, what is the ratio of A is to B is to C? So, then what is the ratio of A is to B is to C? We know, what is the area of the, area of a triangle formula? Area of a formula is a square root of S into S minus A into S minus B into S minus C. They got the area formula? So, that ratio, we know ratio means this is ten X. So, X, two X and five X, okay? Right, so then, so what is the area given? So, ten equal to square root of, yes, S is how much? Ten X into S minus A is how much? X. S minus B, two X and S minus C, five X. Means what will come? X, ten equal to, here ten, here ten, two tens are there. So, one ten, for X power four means X squared. So, ten, ten cancel, so X squared equal to how much? One. So, X equal to how much? One. So, X equal to one. X equal to one, we have to find the ratio of A is to B is to C. Ratio only we have to find, we have to find out. Right, we have to find out ratio. If X equal to ten means, S part, S is how many parts? Ten parts. S is how many parts? Ten parts. So, now, S minus A is one, S minus A is one. So, we want A, so X, so S minus A. S minus A is one part. Already, S is ten parts means A equal to how much? Nine parts. Simple, we will find out. So, if you subtract automatically, remaining also we will get. Ten minus one, already X equal to one, it is ten. So, S minus, ten minus one is how much? Nine parts. Ten minus two is eight parts and C is ten minus five is five parts. So, it is in the ratio of nine is to eight is to five, okay? Right, then, so it is a parts, it is value, it is only parts. In the ratio, okay? So, it is in the ratio of, so nine is to eight is to five. And then, next one, C. The height of the cone is forty percent, forty centimeter. A small cone is cut off at the top of a plane, parallel to the base. If the volume is one by twenty seven of the, volume of the given cone, then at what height above the base, the section is made, okay? Just see. So, a cone is there, a cone, so the, parallel to the plane, it will cut. And they, what happens to the cone? Cone, any parts, two parts, top is a cone and bottom, we call it as frustrum of a cone. Frustrum of a cone. So, so listen, volume, one by twenty seventh part, one by twenty seventh part, cut. So, then relation, so, one by twenty seven, cube root is one by three. And then, height, forty, so, total height, one by twenty seven, one third part, forty by three. What is forty by three? Forty by three, three, three ones, three, three and three threes, right? So, something, three threes, nine, three threes, right? So, thirteen point three. And the height, what is the height and how to add? The height is how much? Or forty by three point fraction, forty by three. Total height, forty, what is, what height above the base, base of the section is made? Base, height, divide, so, this part, he is asking. That height equal to, forty minus forty by three. And then, one twenty, one twenty minus eight, eighty by three, eighty by three means twenty. Three two six, three six eighteen, twenty six point six. Approximately, how much? Twenty seven percent. It is direct, process, okay? So, anytime, good, so, frustrum of a cone, so, cut, top is divided with some part. One by twenty seventh part, divide, immediate, then, one by twenty seven, cube root, find out. One by twenty seven, cube root is how much? One by three. Simple, top height, given height, one by three part. Same question, same thing, same question, one by, instead of one by twenty seven, one by sixty four. One by sixty four means what is the cube root? One by four. And what is the height of the top cone? Top cone, height, simple, forty by four, forty by four is how much? Ten. Direct, top part, bottom part, thirty. Approximately value. So, right, procedure. So, this question, S S C, E model question, nearly four to five times. Okay, so, direct, anytime it is given, make cube root, cube root, so, divide, other, top, height. Okay, right, now coming to solution, solution. So, this is a cone. See, cone, cut. Right, so, what is the volume of a cone? Volume of a cone is one by three pi R square H. So, the volume of a cone is one third by R square H and the total volume is one third by R square H. Now, it is a total. The total height is how much? H. Total height, H and total radius. Smaller cone, smaller, it is small H. Right, second condition, if the volume is one by twenty seventh part of the given volume. Given volume, one by twenty seventh part. So, what is the volume, volume, V one, V one volume, what is V one volume? One by three pi R square H. So, one by three pi R square H. But, it is equal to, this is equal to, what is the condition he is telling? One by twenty seventh part of the given volume. What is the given volume? One by three pi big R square H. So, one by three, one by three pi cancel. So, what we are getting here? R square, small R square, H equal to one by twenty seven of big R square H, right? Now, what, what he is asking? Find the height, E height, H one, okay? E height, E height, if you know the height, E height, what is capital H? Capital H, forty. And small H, find out, automatically, H one, find out. So, in geometry, point, whenever, if a triangle is inscribed in another triangle. A triangle, triangle, and if it is a rectangle triangle, a rectangle triangle, both triangles, right angle triangle, similar triangles. Right, so, here, what we are observing, here is small right angle triangle, is there here, second big right angle triangle. Two right angle triangles, so, these two triangles are which triangles, similar triangles. First, of a cone problem, similarity, and this, I will teach, so, simple, height by height equal to radius by radius. Height by height, small H by capital H equal to, small H by capital H equal to small R by, small R by capital R. Okay, so, H by, capital H, forty equal to, so, R smaller, so, small R by capital R. Right, what is a small R? Small R, what is small R, small R equal to capital R into H by forty. Small R equal to capital R into H by forty. So, in place of small R, capital R into H by forty, substitute. So, in small R, so, here, R square, big R square into H square by forty into forty into H equal to one by twenty seven into R square into, how much? H is how much? Forty, right? So, now, big R square, big R square cancel. So, now what will come here? H cube, H cube equal to, H cube equal to, H cube equal, H cube equal to, forty cube by twenty seven. H equal to, forty by three. So, what is the height we are getting? The height of the cone is how much? Forty by three. Forty by three, eighty by three. Forty by three plus eighty by three is how much? Forty, one twenty by three, forty, H one is how much? Eighty by three, eighty by three means approximately, it is how much? Twenty seven centimeter. This procedure, so, anytime, a cone, parallel, with some volume, one by twenty seventh part, one by sixty seven, sixty fourth part, one by eighth part, simple, one third part. Cube root, one by twenty seven, cube root is how much? One by three. So, height, divide, automatically, smaller height. Directly we will get, okay? So, anytime it is given like this, simply cube root, cube root, so, divide. One by twenty seven, three, one by sixty four, four, one by eight, two, okay? Yellow, okay? Then, next one, six. A hemisphere is paced on a cone along their plane, planar faces. The radius of the base of a hemisphere is twenty five centimeters and that of the cone is twenty centimeter. A cone, a hemisphere, hemisphere base, base radius is how much? Twenty five centimeters and cone radius is twenty seven. Cone circle, hemisphere circle, bigger. Right, so the height of the cone is fifteen. Also, complete base of the cone lies inside the plane of the hemisphere. Then, what is the total surface area of the structure form? Use pi is how much? Three point one four. A hemisphere, so, this is a hemisphere. So, this is the hemisphere. Hemisphere, what is the radius of the hemisphere? Hemisphere radius is how much? Twenty five. So, twenty centimeters, a cone. So, like this, a cone, attach, so, this is the hemisphere, twenty, so, this is twenty five and this part is twenty, so, it can be part twenty five. And the height of the cone is given, what is the height of the cone? The height of the cone is, height of the cone is fifty. What is the total surface area? Total surface area, what is the total surface area? Total surface area, first, cone, curved surface area, so, the curved surface area the curved surface area of cone plus, so, curved surface area of a hemisphere curved surface area of hemisphere plus. So, E part, E part, actually, hemisphere circle, hemisphere circle, attach, thirty, twenty five. Twenty five centimeters, twenty centimeter circle, attach, twenty centimeter circle, so, this part and the total circle area, twenty centimeter circle area, minus, so, let it be, this is big R. This is small R. Big, capital R, R square, big, small R square, minus, then, we will get this area. So, then, we will get the total surface area. Total surface area, curved surface area of a cone plus curved surface area of hemisphere. Place, what is the place? Circle, a circle, a circle, a height, a circle, a circle, so, that we are subtracting. Now, remaining part is only simplification. What is a curved surface area of a cone? Pi R L. What is a curved surface area of a hemisphere? Two pi R, two pi big R square, right? Plus, pi big R square minus pi small R square. Right, so, pi, so, three pi R square. So, three pi big R square, sorry, three pi big R square. So, pi, so, twenty two by seven into R. What is the radius of the cone? Cone radius is twenty into L, slant height. So, if you observe here, slant height, we have to find. So, always, cone, L R H forms, always forms which triangle? Right angle triangle, right angle triangle, base twenty, height fifteen, what is the combination? Fifteen, twenty, twenty five, tripled code, fifteen, twenty, twenty five. So, L equal to how much? Twenty five, so, into twenty five plus, so, three into R square, big R, so, twenty five. So, twenty five square minus pi, small R. What is small R, small R is twenty, twenty. So, that we have to simplify. Twenty two by seven, he has told, three point one four, so, twenty five, twenty is five hundred plus, six twenty five, twenty five, twenty five, six twenty five, six twenty five into three, three five is fifteen, three two is six, seven, three six, eighteen, eighteen, seventy five minus four hundred, okay? And nineteen seventy five, five hundred minus four hundred, hundred, hundred plus nineteen, nineteen seventy five into three point one four, so, total simplification, so, approximately, so, difference, we can do. What we are getting? So, what we are getting? Nineteen seventy five into three point one four, right? Four five is twenty, four seven is twenty eight, thirty, three, nine four is thirty six, thirty nine, three, four ones, four seven, right? So, next, one nine seven five, three five is fifteen, three seven twenty one, twenty two, twenty seven, twenty nine, two and five. Means zero, five and here sixteen, one, nine, one, six, 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 sorry, six. Minute, wrong, one thing, zero, five, so, nine sixteen, sixteen plus five, twenty one, two, right? So, eleven, so, eleven plus twenty, two, two means ten to six, right? So, six to zero one point five. So, what is answer? So, six thousand two hundred one point five. So, you can, so, this is the condition you have to understand. So, total surface area. Okay now, right, next one. Next, geometry question C. In the given figure, find angle A, B, C. We are clear, what we are observing? A, B, C, D is a cyclic quadrilateral, cyclic quadrant. In a cyclic quadrant, the sum of the opposite angles is how much? One eighty degrees. The sum of the opposite angles is one eighty degrees. So, some of the opposite angles is one eighty degrees, means angle B plus angle D. Angle B plus angle D equal to how much? One eighty degrees, why? Because it is a, which quadrant? Cyc, cyclic quadrant, cyclic quadrant. So, angle B is how much? We have to find, angle D is how much? Forty eight. So, forty eight means this angle is how much? One hundred thirty two. So, option D is the right answer. Okay, very simple question. So, in a cyclic, anytime, cyclic quadrant, four points, then, the first and the most important point is some of the opposite angles is one eighty. Some of the opposite angles, one eighty. Second thing, what is the area of the cyclic quadrant? We discussed, area of a cyclic quadrant, square root of S minus A into S minus B into S minus C into S minus D. So, cyclic quadrant area, this is the second point we will discuss. Third point, column is, relationship between the diagonals and sides. Diagonals key, sides key, major relation, what is the relation? We will discuss, the product of the diagonals, the product of the diagonals is always equal to some of the product of the sides. And diagonal, opposite sides, add, equal. Fourth point, cyclic quadrant, so, this is a, which circle? Circum circle, circum circle, one by four square root of A B plus C D into A C plus B D into A D plus B C by four A. So, same thing, one by four into area. cyclic quadrant, four points, similarly, tangential quadrant, similarly, tangential and cyclic quadrant, bicentric quadrant, discuss. So, cyclic quadrant, the basic important point, cyclic quadrant means, some of the opposite angles is always is how much? One eighty degrees, okay now, right? And then, next one. The area of a right angle triangle, it is a which triangle? Right angle triangle, the area of a right angle triangle is six twenty four and one of the side of a right angle is six. Right angle triangle, first, tripled codes, six, 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 eight, ten. Now, you cross verify, area is how much? Twenty four, what is the area? Half into base, base is how much? Six into height, so, that is exactly twenty four. So, six, eight, ten. So, what is our right angle triangle? Six, eight, ten is our right angle triangle. Then, find out the length altitude, length of the altitude drawn on hypotenuse. Hypotenuse, draw, height, right? A, B, C. Five point theorem, five points, so, in a right angle triangle, if a perpendicular line is drawn to hypotenuse. Right angle triangle, perpendicular line, draw, five points, use. So, what are the five points? So, what are the five points? The first point, so, B and a right angle triangle, B and a right angle, how many sides are there? One is B C, second one is B A and third one is B D. Three sides, three formulas, what are the formulas? First, B C square equal to, first side is B C. First, B C square equal to, first side is B C. So B C square equal to, B C square equal to, very tense, second, C, leave, multiply. That is C D into C A, C D into C A, this is first point. Similarly, second point, B C, B A square equal to, B A square equal to. So B A square equal to, B A square equal to A D into A C. A D into A C, A D into A C. So third one, what is the third line? B D, so third line is, B D square equal to, B D square equal to. D, leave, multiply. D A into B C, D A into B C. Fourth point, the product of perpendiculars are always equal, product of perpendiculars, always equal. The A B, perpendicular, B C. A B perpendicular is B C, that is equal to, hypotenuse perpendicular, B D, that is A C into B D. And fifth point, what we discussed, fifth point is, one by, one by B D square equal to, one by A B square plus, one by B C square. Five points, okay? What is the clue? Whenever you are observing a right angle triangle, a right angle triangle, perpendicular to hypotenuse or altitude to hypotenuse. Our height to hypotenuse, immediate, the five points you have to remember. These five points, any length we can find. So A D find out, C D find out, A B find out, B D find out, any length easily we can find. Only thing you have to remember, perpendicular to hypotenuse, altitude to hypotenuse, these points we have to remember. So three sides are given, B D. Just see, point number four, fourth point, A B value, A B is how much? Eight, B C, six, equal to, A C, ten into B D. So B D value find out, right? So what is B D? Forty eight by ten means four point eight, so option D is the right answer, okay? So, any time, so in a right angle triangle, perpendicular to hypotenuse. So this question, fourth point, but sometimes, question of B D, A D, find out, change. C D, find out, anything, A D, find out, five point theorem, use, find out. Okay, now, right, and then, next. Three concentric circles are drawn, yes, three concentric circles, three concentric circles are drawn, and the radius of the outermost circle is thirty. And this is the outermost circle, radius, thirty, and it is thirty, this part is also how much? Thirty, okay, right? A straight line is passing through the center, is divided into five equal parts. A B length, B C length, C D length, equal to, A equal to B equal to C equal to D equal to E. Then, what is the radius of the inner and the middle circle? Inner circle, middle circle, each part, first, what is the number? Thirty, and total sixty, sixty, and one, two, three, four, five, so sixty, sixty, so sixty, many parts. Five parts, and each part, twelve, A, twelve, B, twelve, C, twelve, D, twelve, and twelve. So the radius of the inner circle, inner circle, this is the radius. So R equal to how much? Six, maximum diameter, twelve, radius, six, actual, six, twelve, six, eighteen. Middle, middle, this is the part, right? So this part we want, and E part, twelve, and E part, six, and R one equal to how much? Twelve plus six is how much? Eighteen, so what is the radius? Eighteen, so six centimeters, diagram, easy, find out, okay? Simple question. And then, a pole is twenty four meters above the ground, okay? And one third of the pole is below the ground, okay? Right, find the angle subtended from a point, which is eighteen meters away from the pole, to the two ends of the pole. A pole is twenty four meters above the ground, a pole, this is the ground. The ground, pole, twenty four meters above the ground, ground. And, and one third is below the ground, so one third part, and two third, this is the height. This is the height, this is two third part, one third part. So two third part, two third part is how much? Two third part is twenty four, means one third part, twelve. And, what is the distance, one third part, twelve, the E distance, twelve. Final twenty four, this is twelve. Find the angle subtended from the point, which is eighteen meters away, eighteen meters, so from the two ends of the pole. A pole, kind of pole, observe, so one is theta, and another one is alpha. So what is, find the angle subtended, theta plus alpha, what is theta plus alpha? So, what is tan theta? Tan theta, so it is tan theta opposite by, twenty four by eighteen. And tan alpha, what is tan alpha? Tan alpha, opposite is twelve, and adjacent is how much? Eighteen, twelve by eighteen, two threes, four threes. Theta equal to, tan inverse, four by three. Alpha equal to, tan inverse, two by three. So theta plus four by three, two by three, four by three, and two by three, right? So option D is the right answer, okay? So tan inverse, two by three, plus tan inverse, four by three, okay? Right, and then, next one. Again, heights and distance question. The angle of depression of a street light situated at the top of the pole makes, with a point on the street, is equal to tan inverse one by two. The switch of the light is situated at the middle of the pole. Find out the angle of elevation of the same point on the street makes with the switch. Here, a street light, one street light is there, a person, so, with angle of depression. One thing, angle of depression, angle of elevation, so angles, always equal. So any time, angle of depression, always we have to convert into angle of elevation. And theta, is how much? Tan inverse one by two, and tan inverse of one by two, okay? So, the switch of the light is at the middle. This is the correct, this is the. E part, H by two, correct, middle. Then, find the angle of elevation at the same point. So, middle point, what is the elevation? Simple, first, bigger triangle, tan theta, what is tan theta? Tan theta, H by, this is the distance. X, so, tan theta equal to, tan, sorry, tan theta, or tan theta equal to how much? H by X, so, tan theta, H by X, that is equal to, one by two. So, tan inverse, one by two is theta, means tan theta is one by two, tan theta, one by two, H by X is one by two. Second, this is, this is the alpha. So tan alpha equal to, what is tan alpha? H by two by, H by two by X, and H by two X, H by, two X, H by two X, so H by X, one by two, H by two X is how much? One by four, and tan alpha equal to how much? One by four, and alpha equal to, tan inverse, one by four. So tan inverse, one by four, so option A is the right answer, okay? Then, next one. Each interior angle of a regular octagon, octo means eight, so interior angle, interior angle, exterior angle, just the interior angle, easy to find out. External angle, what is the external angle of a polygon? Regular polygon, three sixty by N, and three sixty by eight, means eight forty five. So exterior angle is forty five, means what is the interior angle? Interior angle is how much? One hundred thirty five, why? Because interior angle plus exterior angle is always, interior angle plus exterior angle is always how much? So exterior angle forty five, interior angle, one thirty five, so option C is the right answer, okay? Then, next one. R equal to seven minus four root three, then find the value of, root R plus, root R plus one by root R. So square roots, find out, so, mind calculation, how to find the square root? So R, seven minus four root three. Root R, square root of, seven minus four root three, find out, so, inside, always two. Seven minus two into root of, inside, four into three. So, inside, four into three. Now, next, root find out, so inside value, front value, sum equal. Already, four into three, and four plus three is how much? Seven, exactly, direct, square root. So how to write the square root? Simply, first value is root pattern, root four, so plus, minus, 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 so root three. So what is the square root? Two minus root three is the square root of seven minus four root three. So, step by step, mind, calculate. So what is the square root of seven minus four root three? Two minus root three, so, root R, root R means, two minus root three, plus, one by two minus root three. So, two minus root three, two minus root three goes up, what happens? Two plus root three, by squares difference, squares difference, two square and three, four, two square and four, minus three and one. One, denominator, and two minus root three, receive, two plus root three. So, root three, cancels, answer is how much? Four, so option D is the right answer, okay? And then, next one. Question number fourteen. Find the value of, one by A square plus A X plus X square minus one by A square minus A X plus X square plus two A X by A power four plus A square X square plus X power. So, algebra, whenever, a algebraic expression or an equation is given, if, a algebraic expression, equation, simply assume the values. Values, but, three conditions, always you have to follow three conditions. Condition number one, while assuming the values, your question should not be undefined. My question, whatever, undefined, infinite, similarly, while assuming the values, options also should not be undefined. Options, undefined, and third one, so your options should be unique, my options, unique, okay? So, me, value, three conditions, always you have to keep in your mind. Right, so, expression, simple, X equal to zero. If I take X equal to zero, this is the amount, zero, this part, zero, here, X is zero, most value, zero, and here, one by A square, minus, one by A square. One by A square, cancel, answer is how much? Zero, so option A is the right answer, okay? So, this is, simply, assume the values, values, okay? Right, then, next one. See, if X power A into X power B into X power C equal to one, and X power, A power M into A power, that is A power M plus M, N plus P. A power, X power, A plus B plus C equal to one, means how we can write? If the bases are equal, then the powers are also equal, and if A plus B plus C equal to zero, what is the condition? If A plus B plus C equal to zero, then, A cube plus B cube plus C cube equal to how much? Three A B C, so that is the condition, we know, any time, if A plus B plus C equal to zero, A cube plus B cube plus C cube minus three A B C value, zero. So what is A cube plus B cube plus C cube equal to how much? Three A B C, so direct question, so option D is the right answer, okay? Then, next one. Question number sixteen. A square plus B square plus C square minus A B minus B C minus C A equal to zero, what is A is to B is to C? If A square plus B square plus C square equal to any time, equal to A B plus B C plus C A. So this is the condition, if A square plus B square plus C square equal to A B plus B C plus C A, then what is the condition? A equal to B equal to C, so that is the condition. So any time, if A square plus B square plus C square equal to A B plus B C plus C A, A equal to B equal to C, means what is A is to B is to C? It is in the ratio of one is to one, okay? Next one. So, if cos, three cos two X equal to cos X plus two, find the value of sine X, where X is in between zero and ninety. So, clear, options, sin X value, sine zero, sine thirty, sine forty five, sine sixty, these values, clear. And here, X, out of it, zero, thirty, forty five, sixty, this is value. Just, X equal to zero, substitute, if X equal to zero, so three into, cos zero, what is cos zero? One equal to, cos X, so what is cos zero? One plus two, exactly, three into three, and what is X value? X value is how much? Zero degrees, X value is zero degrees, means what is sine zero? Sine zero is how much? Zero, so what is the answer? Option A is the right answer, okay? Then, next one. Question number eighteen, eighteenth question. If a circle, a circle of maximum possible area is cut off from a rectangular cardboard sheet of length ten and breadth is how much? Six, what is the remaining area of the cardboard? A cardboard is there, what is the length? Length is how much? Ten, and breadth is how much? Six, right? So, maximum, a circle is removed, a circle, remove. So, what is the total length? The total length is how much? Six, total and six, radius, now we have to find the remaining area, E area, find out. So this area, we have to find, how to find the remaining shaded region, remaining area? Remaining area means, how we will get? So, area of rectangle minus area of circle. Area of rectangle minus area of circle, what is area of rectangle? L into B, that is ten into six, minus, area of a circle, what is area of a circle? Pi R square, pi into R square, R is how much? Three, three square, sixty minus nine pi, so sixty minus nine pi is the right answer. Sixty, this is sixty minus nine pi, so sixty minus nine pi, so option B is the right answer, okay? Then, next one. Question number nineteen. See, in triangle A B C, as shown in the below, the bisector of internal angle B, internal angle, this is the internal angular bisector, and the external angle C. So this is the external angular bisector, so intersect at D, if angle B D C equal to forty degrees, what is angle? Internal and external angle combination theorem, internal and external angular bisector combination theorem. Angular bisector combination theorem. So, classroom, so theorem, so, okay, base, in a single base, internal angular bisector or external angular bisector. If, angle, third angle, the third angle is always double the intersecting angle, two angle, B D C. B D C angle, double, this option B is the right answer. So, direct question, so if you know the theorem, so direct, I will mark. Internal angular bisector, external angular bisector, on a same base, if both are intersecting at a point, the intersecting point angle is always half of the third angle. Third angle, always double the intersecting angle. So, internal and external angular bisector combination theorem, one of the combination theorem, okay? Right, then, next one. So, another heights and distance question. See, if the angle of elevation of a sun changes from thirty degrees to forty five degrees, the length of the shadow of the pillar decreases by twenty meters, then what is the height of the pillar? See, so, a pillar, so the pillar, two angles, so first, how much angle it is there? Thirty degrees angle is there, so thirty degrees angle, shadow, right? Now, what happens? Now, the angle becomes forty five degrees, angle, forty five degrees, what happens? The shadow is decreased by how much? Twenty, and twenty meters shadow, twenty meters shadow. I think, what is the height of the pillar? shadow taken and a I the what is the height of the pillar pillar you can height emoutunde and a how now so combinations diagram notice in the danger ali combinations right thirty degrees forty five degrees combination forty five degrees combination one one right next thirty degrees combination what is thirty degrees combination one by root three so this is a root train this is one means remaining is how much root three minus one it is a the thirty and forty five degrees combination it's so in game and I prepare how many parts we know any parts man a tells you root three minus one parts man a tells you root three minus one parts is how much twenty and a one part is how much twenty by root three minus one how many parts we want man heightened any parts one part so what is the height height is how much twenty by root three minus one rationalize just a twenty into root three plus one so minus plus out in the by squares difference three minus one and the two two one so ten so ten into root three plus one so what is the height height is how much ten into root three plus one okay so this is about today's session okay so next session low in going questions when I discuss right thank you